To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. So can we have roll call?
Ryan?
Here.
Stan Filippo?
Here.
Cardi is absent. Kirstenson?
Here.
Madigan?
Here.
Turner is absent. Henning?
Here. Okay, do we have any announcements and correspondence?
Yep, Madam Chairperson, just a quick update with regards to the last village board. Village Board at the last meeting in September, second meeting in September, did approve the red dot. They haven't had a planning commission since their approval, so the whole site plan for red dot was approved.
Thank you very much. Now we will go on to public comments if you would like to speak. Oh Cheryl, do you need to please give the minute on Saturday? Yes, we need to approve the September minutes. We're just doing September tonight.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the September minute as presented.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Ryan?
Yes.
Stan Filippo?
Yes.
Kirstenson?
Yeah.
Madigan?
Yes.
Henning?
Yes. Okay. Now we'll open to public comments. If you'd like to speak, would you please stand up and raise your hand before me? Okay. Any old business? Then I think we move on to new business, PZB 21-08, consideration of a site plan review for Clublands Clubhouse located at Savage Road and White Lake Drive.
That's now Chairperson, let the record reflect this matter for site plan review for the property coming, you know, as a Clublands Clubhouse 21-08, it's a site plan review. The property is located at Savage Road and White Lake Drive. I'll kind of walk you through the site. I wanted to first start with what's before you with the site plan. With the site plan, there are certain aspects we look at, so we obviously layout of the overall project, context of the property, location. The layout often including a parking access points, we'll look at that. We'll also looking at architecture, making sure it conforms with the village's site plan review ordinance. We also look at landscape plan, making sure that it complies with the village's site plan review ordinance. Lighting, photometrics, lighting standards, trash enclosures, which are required for this type of development. As it relates to engineering, very briefly, as you know, village engineers required to review this as part of stipulation, so we won't review full engineering tonight. But this kind of gives you a highlight of what will be reviewed. In context, the original PUD for the Clublands actually did incorporate a clubhouse for this property, so from day one, the residents who have bought in or purchased into this development have been very patient because the original developer did promise the construction, the development of a clubhouse, the pool, recreational facilities. As you well know, there's a long history for the Clublands development, but the original developer Newman Homes did go bankruptcy and this was in bankrupt litigation for many years. The successor developer didn't make a commitment at a fine point in time that he would work with the association to proceed with the development of a new clubhouse. So we are fortunately at that point now where I think the developer and the homeowners association bringing for you a concept for a new clubhouse, which will be a center point for this development. So again, with regards to context, the proposed facility would be constructed at the corner of Savage Road and White.
White Lake Drive.
Sure, White Lake Drive. So this is obviously a vacant parcel right now, so this will be the new clubhouse. It would be appro- the actual clubhouse would be approximately 10,126 square feet on approximately 7.46 acres. So directing your attention to the actual site plan, you can see there's actually a new, larger, actually a fairly large parking lot. The applicant has identified 73 parking spaces. Based on the village's ordinance, we actually a clubhouse, or a private clubhouse, would require one space for every 600 square feet, which is a total of 17 square, 17 spaces, which would also include one minimum handicap parking space. So you can see the applicant's proposed parking facility goes well beyond the village's minimum requirement. So based on that fact, they do comply with the village's minimum standards for parking. As it relates to the actual parking space dimensions, they do comply with regards to the actual required dimensions. Directing your attention. Directing your attention to the actual architectural elevations. The applicant has submitted elevations on all four elevations. Those four elevations are basically in your packet. I highlighted two elevations, specifically the front elevation, which will be facing the parking space area, and also the rear elevation facing the pool area and recreational aspects of this proposed clubhouse. The overall building itself, as you all know, the village's site plan requires a building to be constructed of quality materials, including face brick and ore glass or stone. One of the things we have consistently allowed in lieu of face brick is LP or party board, which is, it's basically a quality material. It's a material that obviously does comply and we've allowed that it be used in lieu of face brick, especially for certain types of design. The applicant has submitted an architectural design, which reflects a more of a craftsman traditional design. You see that there's a series of gables, there's asphalt shingles for the actual roof line. There are a series of projections, which will have metal seam roofs. The applicant's architect has made extensive efforts to incorporate a fair amount of articulation. You can see there are a number of projections, gables, traditional windows. Below the gables will be a LP smartboard, shingles, which again reflects a shingle style binocular design. So staff is generally comfortable with the overall architectural proposal. We think that the architectural elevations will blend in quite nicely within this character and single-family home styles of the Clublands development, and also the natural siding siding of the property. So with the location of the property, with the overall character of the property, character of the subdivision, this proposed clubhouse will seamlessly fit into the general character. So again, you see that not only is the LP smartboard, vast majority of the building, there's extensive windows. Also, there's also Wayne Scott stone along the lower window line, which again provides some additional character, additional architectural articulation and movement of the overall building. Directing your attention to the rear. This proposed elevation will be facing, I believe, the western elevation, facing the west towards the pool area. Again, you can see a large terrace area with a series of French doors. Again, extensive articulation on the roof line, numerous penetration of the windows. So overall, staff would state that this clarity does comply with the village's architectural minimum requirements as it relates to our site plan review ordinance. Directing your attention to the landscape plan. The applicant has incorporated extensive landscaping. Actually, the proposed overall landscape plan, over the number of plantings, actually well exceeds the minimum requirements of the village's ordinance. As it relates to the actual area along Savage Road, there'll be approximately 440 linear feet. And the applicant has specifically incorporate over 17 trees along with 42 shrubs. We think there's an opportunity to maybe reapportion some of the landscaping on the site to add some additional landscape, actual shrubs or plantings along Savage Road. They're slightly below, below the actual minimum requirements for shrubs, but they do exceed the requirement for trees as it relates to the village's site plan review order. As it relates to the other areas, the parking, landscaping, the applicant has incorporated, actually, overall count well exceeds the minimum requirements. The perimeters, the side perimeters and rear perimeters, and especially the area around the pool area and recreational, you see, you see extensive landscaping, which goes well beyond village's requirements. I've broken down the overall number of plantings, some evergreen shade trees, ornamental trees, shrubs, and evergreen shrubs. I won't review those, they're in my staff report, but again, overall landscape plan does comply with the one exception of adding some additional shrubs along the Savage Road frontage. But with that, the overall landscape plan does comply with the village's minimum requirements. A photometric plan, you have a photometric plan in your packet. The overall photometrics have been submitted on the overall plan. Generally, does comply with the village's minimum foot candle illumination. If you raise your memory, you have a foot candle illumination level of a half a foot candle at the property lines. There is some obviously residential areas to the west of this property. So it's obviously important that any outdoor lighting incorporate what we call a 90 degrees or shoebox design where there's no illumination or light pollution that would have any impact in any adjacent, single-family home. But based on our review, we believe that this photometric plan does comply with the village's minimum requirements. Actually, cut sheets were submitted, our staff reviewed the lighting standards. Based on our review, they do comply with the village's, again, shoebox design. The wall packs in the building, the lighting standards themselves will again have incorporated shoebox design and be directed 90 degrees directly down, so there should be no visibility of the actual light sources in this area. As it relates to the trash enclosure, the applicant has identified a trash enclosure, which will be located on the southern perimeter of the proposed parking lot. The actual design has not been submitted, but again, it's part of stipulation, we require that the actual enclosure of this trash enclosure be constructed with LP board, which is the predominant material of the proposed clubhouse. As it relates to stormwater, the actual village engineer will be reviewing the full engineering. As it's submitted, there's stipulation, obviously before any building permit that's submitted, we'll have to have a complete review and approval of the preliminary and final engineering, which is the village's policy. So as it relates to parking, architecture, landscape plans, photometrics, trash enclosures, the applicant's overall plan does comply with the village's site plan review ordinance. Based on our facts, this evening, we're making favorable recommendation that the planning commission make a favorable recommendation of this site plan for the clubhouse or Clublands development with the four outlined staff stipulations. With that, I'll conclude my staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Garrigan. Mr. Ryan?
Um, just a minute, please go on. Find something on my screen.
Ladies and gentlemen on the board, my name is James Veselli, I'm the new village attorney. Thank you all for having me here tonight. I just want to put on the record that while I do not represent them directly, the plans were prepared by Manhart. I don't know what branch it is, but Manhart Consulting, whom I work with on many private and public sector projects. I have not talked to them about this project. I do not plan on talking to them about this project other than outside or within my scope as village attorney, but I just want to put that on the record so it stays. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
On our screens here, you show on sheet number 20, the parking on sheet number 22, and they're different. So what parking do we get?
Yeah, maybe Mr. Mertz can outline that. I think that.
I mean, what's? I got two parking layouts, one's completely different than the other one.
First, we're going to swear in anybody that wants to speak for or against this development. So if you plan on talking at all regarding this item, please stand up and raise your hand, so I can administer the oath. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you've given this hearing is factual to the best of your knowledge?
Let me come up here and let me show you the screen that I'm looking at, because maybe it's, maybe it's something different here than I'm looking at. Here.
Yeah, that was. What is the photometric? Right? This is the photometric.
Yeah, but.
Is it the same?
No, no, it's completely different. It's a square or ten year parking lot.
Yeah. So is it this?
It's, it's the square.
It's not this circular.
There was a couple of.
Excuse me, could you stand in front of the microphone, please, and address?
I take this off.
Sure, absolutely.
The, the project had a couple of site plan variations, all done by. I'm Troy Mertz, I'm the developer, I am here tonight representing Clublands HOA number two, with under the plan of, and the manager of. Okay, this is a group here is managed, President David Nolan is Clublands HOA one. Because of the bankruptcy of Newman Homes and subsequent start and stop of the program, our two HOAs work together in harmony to represent the entire subdivision, entire community. Okay, thank you, thank you. And to Mr. Veselli's point, the Manhart plans, not to your point, but the fact that it's Manhart, has been the engineer of the site since 2000, I'm going to say 2004, roughly speaking, when the project first started here. So they might have slipped in a plan that, or the package that they had originally submitted to the municipality many, many years ago. We had worked together collectively on the new architectural plan for the new clubhouse. And this is the, this is the plan that we're going with, and that aligns up with that photometric plan that you have as well. So an older sheet might have been in there for some reason, and I apologize to that. I think I'm just, I just want to make sure that, you know.
So how many?
What we get? Yes, okay.
Does it say on the photometric plan how many parking spaces are, is it the same amount of parking spaces or?
Yeah, I mean, I counted them real quick. See, it matches up with your other plan, but then that other drawing showed up, which is completely different, and I was just.
Right.
Saying, okay, what do we, you know, what's? Is there an option here, or has this been settled with where you're going or whatever, that, that's all. And just to shed a little more light on that, the original developer actually had a foundation for the clubhouse. Yeah. And holes dug for both swimming pools. Yeah. When they went bankrupt. And so subsequent to that construction, the bank that owned the property before me took out, for safety reasons, those structures. And they demolished them, and so there was some movement of the material and reconditioning of the site. So that's why we took some time to design a site plan to report with what's existing conditions now, not what was the previously existing condition, which is probably that.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Stan Filippo, or Mr. Ryan, do you have any other question?
No, that's all I have, thank you.
Ms. Stan Filippo?
Okay, so going, going back to the parking, is it the same number of spaces as the other parking plan? So we're still talking like 70? Sir, I'm sorry, for Zoom to hear you, you have to speak in a minute.
Hi, I'm Dave Nolan, I'm president of the Clublands. I've done an overlay of both, and there are 70 through, so parking spaces in both.
Okay. Okay, and so on the photometric plan, you know, are these, is there any landscaping in these spots here, like that I see?
Yeah, if you do look at the landscape.
Plan for those areas?
You'll see that there are.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, great. And then the only other, you know, question that I had was on the roofing. The, I know it was a combination of the architectural shingles and the metal roofing. Do you, is there a color picked out for the metal roofing? I saw the metal is going above the dormers.
We have not drilled down on particular colors. Supply chain issues make it a little bit difficult to get ahead of that. What's going to be available when, when it comes time to order those is going to be the predominant factor. But, but we have not done, we did a general color scheme.
Okay.
But have not done the material selections for the outside yet.
Okay, so yeah, I mean, that was the only thing really I saw, I mean, you know, obviously the combination of the architectural shingles and the metal roofing, I mean, I've seen before, but I just was curious about that.
And do we have the gray? Is there, I think there's a rendering somewhere. We had a, apparently a rendering of the color scheme.
Okay.
It's generally kind of like a nautical gray and white type of scheme.
Yeah, because everything we saw was in black and white, so that's kind of why I was asking, you know, if it was going to be like a copper or are we talking, you know, blue, again, you know, or what are we really talking about as far as the color of the metal roofing? And, you know.
Generally speaking, it would be a nautical gray-white theme that the board has selected. The brick would be a similar type of a gray-white type of scheme.
Okay.
But is it, if it's important, we could drill down more on it if it is.
Well, I just was curious, everything we saw was in black and white, we didn't get any color renderings, and, you know, is the metal roofing going to blend in with the architectural shingle, or are you looking for a contrast? I mean, I guess that's more.
It's a blend, yes.
Getting at, so.
It's not like, the flashing was not there for accent purposes. I have done like that, copper with the black.
Right.
Or on other building projects, so I know what you're describing, this is more of a muted, just a blending.
Okay, I see. Yeah, I don't think I had any other questions at this point.
Thank you, Ms. Kirstenson?
Ma'am, yes, I'm just curious about, and maybe Mr. President, this is for you, what was the feedback from residents in the subdivision? Are they receptive to this and concerns?
We have a lot of residents that are legacy residents of the community who bought in there back in '04, '06, '07, wearing all of these amenities they promised. By and large, the community is very excited and getting rather impatient because we've been talking even about this version of getting the clubhouse up and running for probably a year and a half. And with COVID and all of the other challenges surrounding, you know, economics and supply chain and so forth, it's just taken a little bit longer. But the residents are, are excited to get this thing moving. And in fact, there are probably over 100, maybe 125 residents that have moved in in the last three or four years since since Mr. Mertz's development company has come in and gotten things rolling again, and all of those homeowners are buying in expectation of, of these amenities. So this is, if we're on the threshold, we're really, really positive about them here, so we're all looking forward to it.
Thank you. Only other comment, thanks for all the landscaping and staff taking into that, and just a consideration, maybe bike racks, kids want to bike there?
Ms. Madigan?
Well, I do have a couple of questions, and I did want to just ask, so Michael, in your memo, there was a sentence under the landscape plan pertaining to you're proposing seven trees, 17 trees along Savage Road, and additional 183 shrubs or plants should be added. Is that a recommendation, or is that what's going to happen?
That's the actual ordinance, that's a requirement, so I think there's extensive landscaping surplus, so I think there's just some opportunities for them to ship some landscaping around.
Okay, and we would require that, or we're just suggesting that?
It would be, I think it's a requirement.
Okay.
Minimum requirement.
Okay.
So I think if they just add a double row of land, shrubs, it should be fine.
Okay, thank you. When, Mr. President, when do you guys anticipate the project to start and be completed? What's the timeframe around that?
Subject to approvals and permitting, we're ready to go. After final design, if we started this fall and get a foundation in before Thanksgiving, we'll give it our best effort. If not, that we'll just have to see how the weather plays out a little bit.
And then I did see on there, there's a future for the tennis court and the basketball court combo, so you'll come back to us regarding that? Because right now, that's not part of this plan, correct? Okay.
Yeah, we, we have been doing this for a little while, so we've done several surveys with the homeowners in terms of the amenities that they, they would prioritize as importance. And, you know, the clubhouse for the fitness center, the swimming pools really came out, you know, number one, 1A, 1B, 1C in the rankings, but, you know, close behind basketball and, and the tennis court capabilities, and then also a playground and so forth. So we put it in as a phase two, where, you know, you know, money, right? You know, how much, how far will the dollar go, especially with the changes in, in costs associated with construction, materials, and so on and so forth? So we could be back here soon if, if, you know, the budget gods, you know, shine their smiles down on us. But, you know, at least for right now, we don't expect to have enough funding to do that right on time.
Thank you. Um, a couple more questions, sorry. Is, I didn't notice fencing, is there fencing around this whole pool, the whole? Sorry.
Yeah, the, there is, the swimming pool area will, will be fenced. We're working with a swimming pool contractor and a hardscape contractor that are finishing up some work around that, but yes, there'll be a fence around the pools and security. You know, we're looking at probably a key card system in order to, you know, make sure that, you know, it's, it's under good control.
And related to the lighting that is going to be around, I know that it meets the requirements for the village and so forth, but is it, does it match what's on the street surrounding that area there? There, is it going to blend in?
The particular lights, so the street lights are broadcast, like Mr. Garrigan pointed out. By the way, thank you very much for talking about, but I did a lot of presentation, it was very comprehensive to include, and I very much appreciate the time you took to put into that. These are the shoebox, so from a coloring standpoint, it could be that, you know, brown, bronze, brown.
Right.
And that's the color of the, this Michael, but it would not be the same design.
Correct, yeah, right, okay. Perfect, yep, that's great. And then as far as the garbage enclosure, I know that the recommendation is to use the same board that's going to be on the clubhouse, and is that going to be completely enclosed with that as well, so stuff doesn't fly out? And kind of helps making it control that smell, sometimes can be, you, you have people right to your west and south of this, so just to control the smell a little bit more?
Yes, we will first identify what type of dumpster that's appropriate, because, you know, you can have a much bigger or much smaller. And then it'll be built with the same party board exterior, it'd be of, you know, rough. And then it'll be built with the same hardy board exterior, it'd be a, you know, rough carpentry type of built structure on three sides and, and gates to allow the truck to get in.
The only other comment I had, I, I think the, the design, everything, I think it's great, I love, like you said, all the landscaping, I think, I think it will really enhance your subdivision on the area, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments? So, Ms. Sanfilippo?
Yes. So now that you've brought up the fencing, and I know you're working with a pool contractor, do you know what fencing is planned for the pool enclosure, or?
Yeah, I think that would be, they have not fixed a pool contractor, so I think it might be something that comes down the road. Or do you full compliance with regulations, that type of thing? But no big unsightly type of fence that's going to cut off other people's views?
I, I don't know, I'm not, actually, the original developer was a client of mine way back when. And so I'm sure that this is a long time coming for everybody that bought in there years and years ago. This obviously was an amenity that was promised to them. It hasn't been that long, my goodness. And I'm not, you know, I know the fencing is allowed in the neighborhood, I don't know if, if there's certain HOA. Is there a certain, I guess my question is, is there a certain type of fencing that the HOA requires in the neighborhood? That would match?
Yeah, four foot. Most, most of the fencing in the neighborhoods is really two options, and one is a four-foot-high wooden, wooden fence with, with an even top across, not, you know, not scalloped or contoured. And/or black iron.
Okay.
Around, which is used around Heartland Park. And I would suspect that the fencing around the pool area would be near the, the black iron.
Okay.
For aesthetics.
Yeah, I mean, that would make sense, especially with the crafty style building, and it's like it'll be a beautiful clubhouse, so. Yeah, that was the only other question that I had.
Yeah, I, I don't, you know, from a pool standpoint, I'm not sure what the regulation limits might be around how high the fence has to be around the pools. So we'll be doing that, and then, of course, the whole aquatic piece has, there's a, there's a, there's a state permitting process that has to go on as well, which is quite lengthy. And we're just approaching, approaching that, that part of the, the busy work.
Do you know what the, the village is?
Five feet.
Five feet, okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Hey, Mr. Merz, I have a question for you. How are you financing?
With my bank lender herself is doing the financing, and we, we have a shared expense with this HOA one and HOA two, so the two HOAs are working together on, on that as well.
Okay, so it, it will be passed on, some of this will be passed on to each homeowner through their HOA assessment, is that correct?
Right. There's the, the easement and maintenance agreement that exists between the homeowners association and BMB, which is Merz's company, calls out the financial obligations. That agreement was signed, I think, in 2016, 2015 or 2016. And it essentially says that, you know, his, his contribution is, is consumed first, and then any costs over and above that contribution are split between the HOA at eighty percent and his development company at twenty percent. And then we'll be financing that, the, the portion of it that is HOA funded over a ten-year amortization. And so there will be a portion of that that'll appear in the monthly assessments.
So, so it will increase the monthly assessment?
It will.
And being that you have a special service area out there, and you have an SSA on top of your taxes, the, the folks out there are good with it.
Yeah, they're, we, we're working very hard to keep the assessment very manageable. And we're working on a permanent budget for 2022, which takes into consideration those, those additional costs, and we're happy to say that the assessment will stay below a hundred dollars a month.
Okay, okay, all right. And, and so then, this is all in line with the P U D?
Yeah, we, the HOA insists on it all being in line with the P U D.
Okay, thank you very much.
A follow-up on that point related to the assessments. The extra homes are helping to offset that, that cost, right? So you have one fixed cost to run that building and that pool, and the more homeowners you have, the, the lower that potential impact can be.
I understand, thank you.
One more question, one more question.
Mr. Ryan?
How did you come up with the sizing of the clubhouse and, and the number of parking spaces? And as it relates to the size of the pool, and how many people can use the pool at one time, and that based on, and I, and I, I really don't know how many, but I've driven.
One thousand, yeah, up to one thousand homes eventually will be out there, there's about five hundred-ish. About five hundred homes out there now. And, and so I could speak, if you'd like to hear from me or from David or.
I don't care, I'll do this.
Okay, I, I'll take this a little bit. This was modeled after the original site plan.
Yeah.
So we, we did try to do some downsizing, there was originally three pools. In the, in the first iteration, there's only two pools now. There is the potential for a third pool. We've put in scalability into the whole project, like the courts and the tennis courts, basketball courts, different types of opportunities to grow, because the site plan itself is, is, is pretty, pretty large. But we, we tried to minimize our footprint and make sure that we accommodated the seventy-three parking spots to do, you know, a balance of the number of actual homes in there that might actually be used in there. Seventy-three automobiles, one thousand homes, like a.
Yeah, so how did you come up with the seventy-three out of the thousand? I just, I get curious about how these numbers come about. Just from the standpoint of, did I just pick a number out of the air, or was it based on some research done, or something? As I said, I have, like, I'm an engineer, so I get curious on how.
Sure.
We pick numbers out of the air, and for this, not, not that anything's wrong, I'm just curious about how did you pick the numbers?
Yeah, it, it, it was, it was just a balance of trying to identify the, the minimum requirements by the village, which is the seventeen spots, which we knew seventeen spots for that size of a building isn't going to be big enough. And would every car in the subdivision be there all at once? No, you know, and so it was a percentage of that number of. And then working with the site plan that you have.
So what's the, I mean, and again, I haven't really, the first few of the pool, but what's the pool capacity?
The pool is twenty-seven hundred square feet and a hundred and twenty-five thousand gallons of water. It's massive. So, so there are some, the. I, I think, I think in a neighborhood of about eighty or so people at, at once. Beyond that, you have to assume some people are on deck chairs, and some people are in, not in the pool, and some people are in the fitness center, and some people are here and there. I'll also add that regarding parking, there are walking paths that approach the clubhouse space behind it, between the pools and the lake. And so there'll probably be a fair amount of foot traffic, you know, coming to, coming to the clubhouse as well. Eventually, there'll be a path completely around the lake, so people will, you know, be able to approach it from both, you know, north and south. Oh, and, and then there's a, there's a splash pool, an eight-hundred-square-foot splash pool for, for small children that'll run from about eighteen inches depth to zero depth, with a few little fun water features, you know, little, little jets and, you know, and so on and so forth. Eight hundred square feet is not too terribly small, but, you know, we're a pretty big community with a lot of kids, right? So we wanted to make sure that, you know, that moms, you know, had a place and dads had a place to bring their small children and, you know, and enjoy a, you know, quiet afternoon or, you know, something as well. So, so that exists, and then there's a smallish eight- or ten-person spa separate from the pools in the same area. So something for all ages. Yeah, yeah, so in, in Mundaline, there's a developed community. We, we visited, the HOA visited a number of similar communities with similar amenities. And, and we, we approached the work with, with Mr. Merz in, in the context of trying to understand what similar communities had in terms of amenities. And that's how we pretty much wound up with the building size that we have, swimming accommodations, and fitness center, and so forth. And then the other, the other items, the tennis courts and, and the whatnot are, again, there's available green space. We're planning ahead for how that green space would be used, including another large swimming pool should we have a, a future board, if I'm not on it. That a, that a future board might consider expanding the aquatic facilities by adding, so there's room to do that.
Thank you.
So going back to the, the pool. So I'm assuming the little kind of circular, that's the splash pad, the other's the main pool, and then the spa's behind that, right? Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? So with that, do you have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve P Z B two-one dash zero eight with the recommendation about one.
Any discussion?
Ryan?
Yes.
Sanfilippo?
Yes.
Firstenson?
Yes.
Madigan?
Yes.
Penny?
Yes. Right, with that, motion carries? Do I make a motion to adjourn, or would you like to make another? Would you like to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion, please do.
Okay, any discussion? Go call, please.
Ryan? Sanfilippo?
Yes.
Firstenson? Madigan?
Yes.
Penny?
Yes. Meeting is adjourned.